I will call.
Recording in progress.
This meeting of the City of Essex Junction Planning Commission to order at six thirty-one P M on Thursday, November sixth.
And I'll call the city council meeting to order.
Initially, do we have any agenda additions or changes? Not seeing any. Moving on to public to be heard. Any comments from the public on items not on today's agenda? All right. Not seeing anything online. Moving right along. We can move. Should we approve the minutes as part of the meeting, given everything else that's going on?
Yeah.
Yep, okay. So any discussion or modifications to the Planning Commission minutes from our September fourth meeting?
No, I make a motion that we approve the minutes.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Moving right along to business items. So five A, we have a discussion and consideration of the Connect the Junction Transit Oriented Development Master Plan.
All right, so I'll kick those off over here with the. I had included a memo in the packets, briefing what's going on today. In May, the Planning Commission and City Council got a presentation on the Transit Oriented Development Master Plan. And from that meeting, there were some comments and questions. And requested changes to that draft, draft plan report. That version was actually put online in June. I said in the this memo that it was the May twenty twenty-five draft plan is available on the website. It's actually the June version that already takes into account the comments that were received during that first round of of review that both the Planning Commission and the City Council had had the opportunity to do. Throughout the summer, city staff and the project team were out in the public and engaging the public on this plan and specific elements of it. Including on the issues of the height and on what we envision as a potential change to the five corners, the operation of the five corners. Today, we have with us the consultants from Framework. Here with us today, Jeff Rango is online as well as Sarah Lukens. They will provide a presentation of what we have learned so far from the public engagement efforts and what the recommendations are now.
Excuse me, did I have a clarification? When we're talking about the Connect the Junction, are we talking up to West Street Extension or up to Susie Wilson, including the West Street Extension?
So the Connect the Junction Transit Oriented Development Plan is a larger plan that covers the entire Pearl Street corridor. It technically goes down Park Street as well. I mean, this is, this is a whole planning area and this project is about both land use and transportation. There are sub-elements within here, including the Pearl Street multimodal improvements project that in terms of implementation and what's happening specifically with that, that is not a part of today's discussion. But at a high level, it is a part of the plan.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Jeff is online and I have enabled screen sharing. Jeff, you can take it away.
Okay, great. Thank you, Chris. Hopefully everyone can hear me okay. Thank you for the opportunity to be with you virtually. Really excited to present the current draft of the Connect the Junction Plan. My name is Jeff Rango with Framework and we're based in Seattle but have roots and connections in Vermont. Very excited to be back in the state working with the junction on this plan. So let me go to the next slide. So our agenda tonight, we'll provide a project overview, a little bit of a lighter overview than we have in the past since the draft plan is out. We'll focus a fair amount of our time going over the public engagement and input that we've received to date over the last year or so that we've been working on the project. And then we will discuss some of the key proposals. I would say the first item, A, project area height increases probably deserves the most attention because we are developing the zoning code or land development code updates. The other proposals are related to public space improvements. And while we do want to have a concept in the plan that can move forward, there is more flexibility on that during the implementation process. And then we'll wrap up on next steps. So starting with the project background, this is a transit oriented development master plan and it is funded by the rebuilding American infrastructure with sustainability and equity or R A I S program. There were ten communities throughout Northwest Vermont to that are developing T O D plans in collaboration with the Chittenden County Regional Planning Commission, which has been a great partner and provided a lot of guidance and resources during this project. And transit oriented development really focuses on dense, walkable, mixed-use development near transit. Essex Junction is fortunate to already have transit service and some of the elements of a walkable mixed-use community with which we can draw upon. And there's opportunities to reinforce that through this plan and address some of the major challenges like housing costs and access to transit. So the study area is essentially the entire Pearl Street corridor from Susie Wilson to Five Corners. It also includes the Village Center District around Five Corners and then the Park Street corridor as well down to Cascade Street. There are some secondary study areas identified. Those are areas that we considered as we were developing the plan but are not really a focus of implementation strategies in the same way that the core study area is. So now we'll go through a brief overview of smart growth and some of the concepts here. And I'll turn it to Chris to talk about the housing targets.
Yeah, so this plan is developed largely to address the housing shortage. It is one piece of how the city can, can try to meet the housing targets that is, that is now being passed out from the state. And these are numbers that we'd gone over in a previous meeting before with the Chittenden County Regional Planning Commission. As a whole, Chittenden County is aiming, is targeting to, to add about thirty-one thousand six hundred housing units by twenty fifty. And Essex Junction itself is, is targeting about three thousand new units by twenty fifty. In terms of how that looks on an annual basis, right now, the city adds about fifty new units per year on average. Some years it goes, some years we've got multiple apartment buildings that's, that are finished. It could be up to a hundred, a hundred and twenty new units. Some, some years it's close to zero. But on average, the city adds about fifty-ish housing units per year. In order to achieve the mid-range of the housing targets, which I think a lot of municipalities are really trying to, trying to aim for, the city would have to more than double the rate of housing production. We all know that as of right now, housing costs are really high relative to, to what it was before. And the rental vacancy rates in Chittenden County continues to be stubbornly low at under two percent. And that just means that renters and really buyers, they don't have the choice and they don't have the, the, the market power to exercise over negotiating better rates. And this lack of availability also just means that some, some folks that are looking to move here for jobs that they might already have lined up just can't come here. So that has an impact on, on economic development as well. But yeah, this, this project aims to try to address that in the areas that are the most connected and the most convenient. And we look at that as the Pearl Street corridor with its convenient transit access. Marcus has his hand up.
Just a quick question on the vacancy rate. What do you see as a healthy vacancy rate for that kind of competition that'll actually impact the marketplace?
If I remember correctly, it's the, the rate that is considered to be healthy is, I think, four or five percent. Do you, do you remember if that's generally the case?
Yep, closer to five percent has been the target for our region for quite a while. And I don't recall ever achieving it.
Okay, thanks.
Great. Thank you, Chris. So why transit oriented development? I think there's a couple of reasons. One, the Pearl Street corridor and the study area in general has existing infrastructure. Many smaller Vermont communities and traditional downtowns really struggle with this issue in terms of adding new housing and potential for jobs. We do already have frequent transit service and the opportunity to improve that by connecting it to our land use strategies. And then this can, of course, mitigate additional car trips and make the community more walkable, more livable and less impacted from, from local and regional traffic. So there's also some, some, you know, metrics that you can apply to transit oriented development or smart growth. And that is just the efficiency and productivity of land, which gets into environmental as well as fiscal considerations. So the diagram on the left-hand side shows a development in, in a zone that would be similar to the R two. The middle diagram here shows the amount of building area aggregated in the purplish square and then the land area around it. And then the strips show the length of road miles that are needed to serve those. So you need this amount of road to serve this amount of buildings and this much land left over in the arts. Looking at a hundred unit denser urban project, the land area and the building area are roughly correlated here. And you can see the road miles are much less. So that means there's less infrastructure, more revenues, and it's more efficient on the land productivity, which has implications for, you know, tax revenue and provision of city services and so on and so forth. So there's an economic benefit of this approach. And, you know, Chris highlighted the ability for people who are coming to Vermont to take jobs and employers to be able to attract workers. Huge, huge issue and one we're really struggling with in the Seattle area as well. Yeah, pause there for a second.
Sorry for being that guy. So quick question, since you talked about the economic benefits of that area in relation, those, those areas in relationship to each other. But let me ask you, in, when you're looking at that one plot of land with that one building on it and we're talking about height and density, does it make a difference if it's renters or property owners? Does it make a difference in that economic impact of that density?
I, I think the economic differences are probably more minimal. I think there are some differences just in terms of like proportion of renters versus owners and sort of long-term investment in communities. And are people able to get ownership opportunities where they want them and, and sort of develop roots in the community? I think that's an important issue. I think in terms of like tax revenue, it's probably not much of a difference, except that there's always a premium for ownership units. So one of the things that we run into, say, if you're looking at feasibility for like a townhouse project or potentially even like an apartment-style building that's condos, although those tend to be less common. Oftentimes, or fairly often, an ownership project will be much more feasible than a rental. And that's because people will pay a premium on that. So there could be a little bit of a difference in the value, but I would say overall, not as much. And then in terms of like attracting employment, it could kind of cut both ways. Some folks maybe want to rent for a while and then figure out, you know, what their long-term plans are, where they might want to move. So it's kind of the gateway to getting people there if they can't buy a home to take a job locally. While at the same time, I do think having more affordable, smaller-scale ownership opportunities really seems to be the, the thing that many communities we're working with are focusing on because that's the part of the market that's most tough to deliver. You tend to get larger, more expensive ownership homes and then smaller, more, you know, not really long-term opportunities on, on the rental side. Whereas that small homeownership is kind of where the, the market is kind of missing that. So hopefully that answered your, your question. If you have any follow-up, please feel free to let me know.
I appreciate it. I think what I'm being mindful of is the fact that what, I think what we're seeing here in the community is a real lean toward rentals in such a way that it, it is skewing like our rental percentage as it's been acknowledged. But the, you know, when we talk about some of this, these buildings that would be potentially tart, you know, opportunities for height adjustments, right? I think based on what we're seeing and the developers who are doing it, they're leaning into rentals versus providing a variety of, of opportunities, whether it's smaller space for a single homeowner or maybe a smaller space for an older individual to downsize in their retirement years. You know, whatever it may be, we don't have that variety. So anyway, but I think you, you reinforced my, my assess, my assumptions already on this, so thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, so the, the plan is really organized around this vision statement and what we call the big ideas. We really try to use the vision statement and the sort of big ideas to frame the whole strategy within the plan and then filter that down to very specific strategies and actions that can be implemented. We're really focused on in developing a plan. So just some of the themes, and I think these have been reinforced in the engagement, you know, really wanting to prioritize people and sort of benefits for Essex Junction, not wanting the regional traffic concerns to make the community less livable. So how do we make Essex Junction for Essex Junction? How do we capitalize on the Crescent Connector, really long-term project, took a while to get implemented. A lot of hard work and great effort on the city's part to deliver that, which is very impressive, very important and something that the community is just starting to reap the, the broader benefits even beyond just the street connection. More activities and amenities, things to do within the study area. That really is what makes living in a dense environment worth it. You know, you have things to do, you have opportunities for socialization, close access to transit, jobs, community, those sorts of things. The plan is centered around adding housing because that is the major issue that the region and the state is trying to address. Improving connections with focus on biking and walking, making some of the assets shine, of which there are many within the community. And then again, just really focus on Essex Junction for Essex Junction as it's getting its legs under it as a, as a new city. But a community with very strong connections to the past and a bright future. So as I said, we really try to organize the plan around kind of a roadmap and make it easy to understand how it gets implemented. And so we've organized it around these four themes. On the left hand is kind of the core of the transportation housing connection. That is the hallmark of transit oriented development. And on the right side are, you know, some of the things that go along with it, more access to services and amenities, economic development opportunities, and then just a great public life and community vibrancy and continuing to build off of the success of the, the Main Street events and other things that have been happening in the community. So it seems like there's a lot of really good energy, which is awesome. So now we'll move into the engagement and summarize what we've heard there. And we work with a lot of communities around the country and in Washington State and the Northwest. And we always find that having a strong partner at the city on engagement is really a key to success. And just want to commend the city staff and leadership on their efforts for engagement. It's been very well thought out and impressive in terms of the number of folks that have been reached. I think we can always wish we had more engagement, but I feel compared to other projects that we've done, we're, we're hitting the mark here. So at the top is just some of the numbers that we hit in terms of some of the outreach, communications through social media, the newsletters, the Junction News segment, so on and so forth. We have done a lot of conversations with property owners and developers. So I think we've had stakeholder interviews with each of those, if not twice, at least once. And the first thing I think to say is that the, the property owners and developers have very good things to say about doing business and working with the city. So very positive, they don't have a lot of bones to pick per se. They also seem very supportive of the plan and the efforts there. So I think we got a lot of positive feedback in that regard. We had a mix of online and in-person engagement. Some of you will recall, we had the in-person charrette about a little over a year ago. The city has done some great in-person engagement, which I'll let Chris talk about here in a moment. And then we've had a very robust effort online to, to get participation there. And then, of course, outreach that was done at the Main Street event and other events. So this is some of the in-person engagement that was done over the course of the project. And I'd like to turn it over to Chris to talk specifically about some of the in-person engagement they've done and in particular, some of the outreach at some of the apartments that are within the study area.
Yeah, so thanks, Jeff. The city staff spends quite a bit of time this summer being out in the public. And the focus really was on trying to be where people already are. The first event that, that the city staff actually, and the planning commission members coordinated on was the July fourth fireworks event. And then they, we were also out at National Night Out, tabling there and having our displays up and answering questions as people came along. I think our first, one of the events that had particularly high turnout was what we, was an event we held at Maple Street Park. Just, it was during summer camp pickup times. We really timed it so that we would be there when parents were coming to pick up their kids at the end of the day. And also just to try to capture some of the people who are, who are just going to the park, for the park or going to the pool. Yeah, a lot of, a lot of turnout there. We got a lot of good input there. The next two events that we did were really focused on getting the inputs of renters. Throughout a lot of the projects that we've worked on, it's been a little bit difficult to engage with the renters specifically, particularly those that are already living along the higher-density corridors. We set up a little ice cream stand at, at two of these locations, just basically in front of the, in front of the entrances of two apartment buildings along Pearl Streets. And we solicited inputs from folks who are living there and folks who are living, who are visiting. I made a presentation to the Rotary Club on September third. And during the meet me on Main Event Series, we were out for two of those events. One of them was the full open house meeting where we also had a bunch of displays set up inside for a more in-depth dive. The project team from Framework were here as well on September twenty-seventh. But on October eleventh, two members of the Planning Commission were out in, on Main Street as well, just to, to get, get out there for one more opportunity. Yeah, that's it, I think. For the rest of the July to October period, there was also a series of online engagement opportunities available.
Great, thanks, Chris. And thank you to the planning commissioners and others that helped us staff the open house at the Main Street event. That was great and we got a lot of great input and discussion there. Okay, so now we'll go through each of the key proposals, first focusing on the height increase potential. So our framing questions, and we'll go back to these at the end. Should we allow increased sites within the study area? If we allow increased sites, how much housing can we expect, which is something to encourage and we'll show that. If we allow increased sites, how many additional floors should we allow to maximum benefit? To maximize benefit? So this looks at the different proposals and also aligns them or looks at them with respect to the growth targets. So again, we're looking at the mid-range of about a little over three thousand units. And we'll talk a little bit more about the land capacity analysis that we've done here in a moment. But Alternative Zero, which is existing, is four stories and a one-story bonus. Estimated capacity would be about eleven hundred fifty new homes. And you can see the breakdown there between the T O D zone, the Village Center. Annualized growth would be forty-six units at that pace through twenty fifty. The draft proposal would have seven stories with a potential for a one-story bonus. That increase would be about five hundred homes in terms of capacity. Much of that would be in the Village Center zone here. And that would result in an annualized growth just within the study area of sixty-six units. You can, you should also note that the sixteen hundred units or so in Alternative One is about half of the growth target. And just in general, whatever we decide on for this project and this study area, the remaining balance of the three thousand will have to be accommodated in other parts of the city. And that will be something that'll be looked at as part of the comprehensive plan. So the, the proposal before you is sort of the middle one. We did also look at Alternative Two. As you get above eight stories, again, there are some nuances with this a bit now with some of the newer building technologies. But the general rule of thumb is once you get over around eighty-five feet, you start getting into high-rise construction and your feasibility starts changing. That may be actually a case where you might see more condo and homeownership opportunities because those tend to be more expensive to build and therefore there might be a premium in doing for sale units versus rent. However, at nine stories with a one-story bonus, again, you're getting into kind of that in-between height between a mid-rise building and high-rise building. Oftentimes isn't feasible. However, with things like mass timber, we are seeing some buildings that are popping up in that kind of in-between height, but it is a little bit less common. So the draft plan proposal, just to be clear, is Alternative One. And we'll come back to that in a few moments. So the land capacity analysis that we've been working on, you know, the housing targets are due for Vermont. Something's been talked about for a long time. And now we're being put into place, which I think is, is good in many ways. It gives communities something to aspire to and some more detailed sort of information or targets with which to look at your land use plan and calibrate it appropriately. Because the study area is relatively small compared to some of the larger communities where we do. This type of land modeling has been very common in some of the Western states because we've had housing targets for thirty years or so that we've had to, to update and accommodate. So with the help and guidance from Chris and others at the city, we've been able to get very detailed here. We're able to include pipeline developments. So those are projects that we sort of know what they will be. They may not be constructed yet or they may be in the process of being constructed, but we generally know how many units and whatnot. So those have been plugged in. And then through many of our conversations with the property owners, we've been able to glean their plans for redevelopment and timelines roughly and be able to factor that in, as well as identify other parcels that are either medium-low or not likely to be redeveloped. So I feel like we've gotten in more detail in this analysis than we might in sort of a citywide model, which is great. And then we just assume a certain amount of density based on anticipated average height and we decide for each scenario. Just one thing to keep in mind, you know, since this is the first round of doing this, we have a little bit of flexibility, I think, on assumptions. But as you all know, there's a fair amount of variation in terms of what could be built on some of these parcels. And so if projects are built, say, less dense than what's assumed in the model, that'll just have to be accommodated or updated in the future and recalibrated. But for now, I think we've done a good job in coming up with estimates based on the best information that we have at the time. So appreciate the help from the city on that.
With the assumption of a scenario one with the seven plus one-story limits, we certainly aren't assuming that. aren't assuming that every new building that pops up is going to be eight stories. In fact, we are assuming that we would get approximately an average between five and six stories, and that's just because of the variation in a lot configurations and lot sizes. Taller building is just not feasible on all lots. If it's too small, it doesn't work. So I think we have, we've made some assumptions here, but they have been tested and validated against the styles of developments, the types of development that we've seen along the Pearl Street corridor and what has been proposed lately in terms of lot coverage, unit size, and the density assumptions.
Sorry, Chris.
Sorry, I have a question. It's clarification again. So on the alternatives here, we have the TOD zone and the Village Center zone, and I'm trying to get a sense of how it applies to our current land use map that the Regional Planning Commission is now submitting, which has the downtown center and the planned growth area. So is, can you sort of define what the Village Center looks like in terms of the relationship to the downtown center?
So, yes, there's, actually, that's a good point. There's two pieces to mention here. The Village Center, as we talk about here, aligns basically perfectly with the... It aligns perfectly with the future land use maps, the regional future land use maps center designation. And the planned growth area is going to be basically the rest of the city minus areas that are, you know, vulnerable to floods. But what we're calling the TOD area here is actually, it's a combination of the current TOD district, which is where the shopping centers are, going down to a thing where, around where the CVE is, plus the Highway Arterial District, which is kind of where the fast food joints are with KFC and whatnot. And the MFMU, I think it was the MFMU One Zone. So basically, everything west of West Street Extension, the newer apartment buildings are, that is all a part of what we're calling the TOD area over here as a part of the housing calculations.
Yeah, no, I was just mainly trying to figure out what the relationship was between downtown center and Village Center.
Right.
So we're talking about the same, it's the same thing.
That would line up.
Okay.
This is a point of clarification. If we go with Alternative One that says seven stories but potentially eight, that's for the entire area? There's not a designation to say, if you're in this five-corner downtown development zone, you can build nine stories, and as you get out further down Pearl Street, it's a reduction in those?
No, that is entirely possible. I think what we have here is just a draft recommendation. Certainly, if there's interest in that by members of the planning commission and the city council, that is something that can be nuanced in here. In fact, there could even be more nuance written into here with form-based code. You know, if there are specific worries that there's a desire to alleviate, it would be important to know what the impact is that there's a worry about, and form-based code could be written in a way, you know, to try to address those specific impacts. Or, you know, if there is a desire to have some kind of variation, you know, as Tim is alluding to right now with his hand motions.
I'm sorry, swoop move. For those who are online, I kind of envisioned it as a step in, so as you come further into the core, the buildings get higher. I don't know if that makes sense, but that's kind of the way I...
Well, if I could just build on that a second. So when I was talking about the downtown area, downtown center, and you got 973 units there with seven stories plus one, et cetera. It's actually, sorry Jeff, it's going to some of the future slides, but I'm trying to look at the slide that shows Maple Street and the five corners, and it shows a tall building on one side, but it doesn't show anything in terms of the Martone side or railroad avenue on the other side. So it's more a question for me of what we want to see there in the future in the five corners, and how does that relate to what it is now?
Yeah, so in terms of how, like, these calculations, they exclude lots that we don't expect redevelopment of, you know, anything that is historically designated. And also where there's no indication that there's any development interest, those were either weighed really low in terms of probability of redevelopments, which would reduce the number, or, you know, we just didn't include them at all. Now, we do know that there are several parcels in the Village Center zoning district that are kind of, where the owners have voiced an interest in redevelopment, including what's in the, within the Chittenden Crossing master plan that, you know, that was started, you know, several years ago. And those are all kind of up for discussion.
So what you're saying is with these two alternatives, it would not get us to the 3,000, but it would get us close to meeting those expectations?
Well, it would get about half of the, a little more than half of the growth targets to be accommodated within the transit-oriented development area. It, yeah, it means there's more work to be done, even if, you know, if this was the case to, you know, figure out how to accommodate the additional housing.
Thank you.
Diane? So, so I understand it's up to our prerogative to, if we want to have higher-story buildings in the Village, what we're terming the Village Center, the Downtown Center. That's our prerogative is we wanted to put something higher there, and essentially pyramid things in from the other sections of the city to ramp up toward a higher center if we want to do that, because that's what our current zoning does right now.
That, you can certainly write the policy for that. You never know if there's going to be, if the final uptake and final development patterns end up using all of the available allowed heights, but the policy can certainly be written to enable that.
I'm sorry, I can't see any counselors.
Marcus has his hand up.
Yep.
So, as far as, so two questions. First off, the targets. Totally understand trying to shoot for the mid-target, but outside of like, missing the overall housing targets, I mean, I seem to remember that when this came down from the state, we gave them feedback to say that those numbers were a bit of a stretch, that... And I thought in that discussion, we were probably thinking a little over low, but I'm not sure that I felt like we were really gonna, we felt comfortable that we were going to be able to hit the mid. So I'm a little curious about that background. The other thing is, if, if we deem it necessary, would it be possible to potentially 3D render a potential... You know, what it might look like with these heights in our community?
I can answer that. Just from a technical perspective, yes, we're actually doing that for another client right now. We have some, you know, renderings in the plan, but we intentionally make them more conceptual because we want the process to sort of build out and see where the questions are and where the momentum is going. But if there was a desire to take those and render them to make them look more realistic or what you might expect, that's pretty easy to do, so we could coordinate with the city to see what that looks like, but that's not too hard to do. And you could look at things like shadows and views and things like that.
Great, thank you.
The first part of the question about the low, medium, and high targets. I mean, I think the, many municipalities in Chittenden County are in the same struggle. It is very difficult, and it does take a lot of intentional policy change to be able to change the course of the region's housing situation. But there is, there's no enforcement mechanism written into the housing targets right now. These are housing targets that were based on the state's housing needs assessments. The mid-range target is kind of a split between the, their low and high, and I'll explain why, the low and high have different assumptions based on growth rate. The low kind of assumes a pre-COVID, a return to the Vermont's growth rates, you know, before the recent acceleration. And the high assumes a kind of post-COVID era increased pressure growth rate. So, and the midpoint is really just, the medium one is just somewhere in the middle, and I think there's nothing to say that you have to, I think municipalities are expected to try and to document how the comprehensive plan, to show in the comprehensive plan the efforts and the kind of calculations behind how you aspire to making it work. But if it doesn't work at this point, there is no direct penalty to the city. I mean, it would just be a continuation of the struggles of the housing shortage.
All right, thank you.
And some, oops, sorry, go ahead.
You know, to kind of follow up on some of the questions that Marcus is answering, if we... If we shoot for the seven-story proposal, it's kind of shooting at the midway proposal. And I, and yes, I understand that we have other places where we could develop some density. Have we looked at what percentage of the rest of the city where we're likely to go up is there? I'm worried that if, this is the opportunity for building density, Pearl Street, right? And it seems to me that the, if we're ever going to make the high target, we should shoot for it, and this is the place to do it. And I'm wondering if there is a, I'm wondering if, I mean, my opinion is we should go for option two, so that we can, so that we give the opportunity for developers to go up, especially with, as Jeff mentioned, this gives more opportunities for homeownership as it's more likely that developers will build condos there.
Yeah, I think it's exactly why we have it on the slide, so you can see and understand the reality of our chances of hitting the targets. The, you know, in addition to this work, state law has also changed, and we have also already done this work where single-family zoning, anywhere where you're allowing single-family zoning, you have to allow four units now. So some of that will happen. It certainly won't happen throughout the entire city. But the opportunity is to really maximize homes on the road where the bus is passing. That's the concept, that's the idea here. I do think the higher you go in this area, the more pressure that you kind of take off the other parts of the city. But I'm saying that with exactly what Chris just said, they are not requirements, but they're there for a reason. You know how much housing, we are in a housing crisis right now. People do not have a place to live. That's why we're talking about this, and trying to figure out how to do it in the right way.
No, I get that. My concern with going for the middle is that we're, with that, which, no one thinks we're going to build seven stories from the CVE to the town line, right? No one thinks that's going to happen. I mean, Chris mentioned that, there's some lots that were that, right? So aiming for the middle seems to be that we're aiming to miss the middle target, so I would, I would, I guess, recommend that we go for the higher proposal.
So can you expand on the Chittenden Crossing area? I mean, I remember that plan, the master plan being presented to me on the planning commission a while ago, and it was at that time proposed to actually put a mini-village down there in that area. So has there been any action on their part to step up?
So the Chittenden Crossing project, that was, it had gone through site plan approval for pieces of it, I think the first phase of it. But at this point, that site plan approval has actually expired. And the developer, Black Rock Construction, did the first, the first building, the one on Maple Streets, but they are not interested in continuing. In fact, they've sold off pieces of it to other developers, and they are looking to offload the additional pieces of it to other interested parties. So we don't know what will come of it, but the four-story proposal that was approved there, I can imagine if the policies change, the outcomes might change.
Okay. See, okay, thanks for those comments and questions. Now we'll look a little bit more specifically at some of the engagement. So this is specifically where we ask questions about supporting increased heights specifically on the Pearl Street corridor. And interestingly enough, there is quite a bit of a split between the in-person feedback and online. For in-person engagement, which included the activities we summarized previously, 97, or 94% or 61 votes were in favor, four votes were not in favor. In the online, 24 favor, seven neutral, and 20 in the no. Not a huge sample size, but I think still representative of those folks that participated in it, and again, quite a split depending on whether respondents were giving input online or in person. So in-person, 87% respondents were favored, an eight-to-10 story height increase, and you can see a little bit of a difference between the Village Center and the TOD. Online, similar to what I just showed you, over 50% of online groups favored keeping the existing height limits. Eight stories was most favored height among supporters of increased height limits. My experience when talking about height, which probably is no surprise, tends to be one of the more controversial issues. If people are very much opposed to it, you would get a lot more responses in this just in general. Don't know that to be true, but that's just from my experience. So balancing some of the feedback related to the height increase on the pro and on the concerned challenge side. So on the pro, I think, you know, the main is, it just provides more capacity for housing to address the crisis and all of the reasons that were just discussed. Concentrating your population, your local businesses, I think, you know, some of the new businesses that have come in as part of the development projects in the Village Center have become great assets for the community and wouldn't be there if they didn't have the economic driver of the housing development up above. Increased development viability and flexibility for maximizing the construction type, which is that mid-rise typology, which typically maxes out around eight stories. More progress or more likelihood to achieve the growth targets, and more fiscally and environmentally sustainable, more productive from a land perspective economically. Just to give you an example, we have this, I think, in the plan, or we've had it in previous. Generally speaking, the per-acre value of property that's developed with the newer apartment buildings in the Village Center is about $10 million an acre. It's about $500,000 an acre on some of the shopping centers on Pearl Street, so quite a delta there from a fiscal perspective. On the concerns challenges, the potential for conflict with historic architecture and the suburban rural character, it's important to note that we have a lot of flexibility and opportunities to address this in the code. and opportunities to address this in the code updates, including changes to the zoning district standards themselves, as well as additional design standards and form-based code elements. More housing equals more cars, more congestion, and a need for more parking. Certainly, that could be the case in some instances. Not everyone will use transit, but by locating it in places where there is opportunities for different modes of transportation and access to goods and services within walking distance provides the best opportunity to reduce vehicle dependence and increase transit use. Potential for disrupted views, again, something we can look at pretty easily through some of the modeling that was just discussed. Perceived decline in public safety, and then, or build quality on some of the recent developments could be exacerbated by height increases, but again, could potentially be mitigated through the code updates. So, our recommendation, or the recommendation of the project team, would be to go with the seven stories outright with an additional bonus floor, which can help address the affordable housing goals of the city and the region. Some of the potential mitigation strategies we could look at, some were mentioned earlier. We could have different heights within different districts or sub-districts. We could have standards that limit the height of buildings within certain proximity to the street frontage, because that definitely influences how it feels for pedestrians particularly. We could look at requiring transparency, window transparency, and active street-level uses to increase public safety and activities in the public realm. Even without those retail requirements, the city's getting a lot of great new retail as part of those mixed-use developments, so that's telling me that developers see value in that. And then, we could look at improved frontage standards to enhance, again, design outcomes, whether that's a little bit less height within a certain distance of a street, or improvements for people to hang out, seating, and outdoor dining, and things like that, public art, some of the things that make urban living attractive, we could embed into the code as well. And then, we just have this slide again, if we need to refer back to it. And again, our recommendation is alternative one. And then, back to the discussion, I think, do we want to pause here, Chris, for a bit and have some discussion? Or should we go through the rest of the presentation?
I'll leave that up to the chairs.
I guess, thanks, Jeff. I guess, just, Chris and Regina, I would like to take your recommendation in terms of, we obviously have a number of the public here who are interested. Would it make sense at this juncture to invite public comment on what we've heard so far, or what folks have reviewed in the materials, or to conclude the presentation and then move to a public comment period?
So, good question. My inclination would be to offer both to the planning commission and the council. If you have any other questions and comments to talk about on this height topic first, if you don't, then I think it would be a good time to open it up to the public.
Chris, any?
I think that is a good idea.
Thanks. All right. So, in that case, members of the commission or council, do you have additional thoughts?
To refer to Amber for the city council. I can't see you, Amber, so.
That's a good thing. I don't have, I don't have any questions. I don't see Marcus's hand up. So, I think we're okay, and I don't know about you, Brian, but, okay, so council's good.
Finn?
So, when we did the public outreach, we sort of like told the public that if we were to shoot for the recommended height of eight stories, that to get to that, we would need up to eight stories, which is what alternative one said. And based off of what we see here with the eight stories, we will get about half of what we told the public of 3,000 with, what is it, 1,662. So, in my mind, we, I would go for alternative two, because we would get closer to what we told the public in how many new homes that we would be expecting. Thank you.
Jeff, I have a question that you may be able to opine on, or possibly Regina or Chris, you might have thoughts. In all of these scenarios, when we're looking at a density bonus of a single story, are there scenarios, or are there municipalities that you're aware of, that let's say, they do a multiple density bonus? So, let's say we have the target, or we have the maximum being eight, but the last two floors would be only available if you're achieving those increased affordability limits? Or is it always, is it just a standard, you just have it be the final story?
So, the final story in Vermont is a legal requirement. It's required by statute. Anything, it is, it is up to the municipality if you want additional requirements like that. I think this type of policy, in other jurisdictions, it certainly exists where there are height bonuses that go, that's more than one story. I think the thing to be aware of, when you set a lower limit and then say you can have it if you do certain things or meet certain targets, is that you probably, the aggregate supply, you shouldn't expect it to be higher, you know, with those restrictions than if you had, you know, just a straight-up higher, higher limit to start. But it is a trade-off that, you know, sometimes is worth making, and it is something that does exist.
And I'll just pipe in for one last comment, as I spent 20 years in the construction industry. When you start talking above five stories, it involves concrete and steel. So, the cost difference between seven and eight stories and 10 stories is negligible, because it's concrete and steel, and then wood on top of that. So, it's just a matter of what the, how tall the foundational base is, whether that's four stories or five stories before they transition to wood. And the way the costs, construction costs have gone lately, if they're on that same trend, I don't know that the developer's going to balk much between the cost difference.
Marcus has his hand up, so.
Quick question, Elijah. I appreciate your question, because it brought to mind, and I, so I'm just wondering if staff has any insight on this. But I know that there are municipalities here in the county that also have some LDC requirements around requiring a certain percentage of affordable housing units. Now, the definition of that, of course, I think is slightly different than what we may be talking about generally. But in that context, do you know whether or not those, those requirements in those municipalities, because I believe Burlington has 20%, as I recall, if those have been effective in other communities?
Yeah, I can speak to that a little bit. We have, I think what you're referring to is inclusionary zoning, so it requires a certain amount of affordable housing for any project. And usually, when that is put in place, it is done so to meet legal requirements at the time of an upzone. So, if there was to be something put in place, now would be the time to consider it. It's also a very robust program in the city of Seattle, and they actually just did a fairly well-done sort of look-back and report on that program. And I think the findings were pretty clear. One is, when the development economics are favorable, meaning construction costs aren't egregious and borrowing costs aren't egregious, those programs can work very well and produce housing.
But not right now.
What's that? Which is not right now. Right, exactly, good point. And so, they can be very successful. Some communities will offer like a fee instead of doing onsite units, which can also be some tension. And in the case of Seattle, everyone opts for the fee, for whatever reason. So, the, but the other, I think, cautionary piece of that is that those assumptions that you look at when you put the program in place, which theoretically you should be doing like a pro forma analysis and seeing how the costs of the affordable units affect the overall delivery of the project, otherwise it all moved forward and you won't get any housing. And the finding of that report for the city of Seattle was just that those assumptions are really not durable over time. And so, if you are to consider something like that, I think, you know, being a little bit more modest on the requirements, so it doesn't stop market rate production, is important. And then, having regular check-ins to sort of look at the program and recalibrate it, so it doesn't end up stopping housing from happening. The other, I think, thing is that, you know, the middle housing, the small, more affordable ownership housing, is really the hardest to deliver in the market. And sometimes, I think, the inclusionary programs really focus more on sort of the higher-end housing that can then pay for the subsidized units, and you don't get those middle ownership opportunities. Of course, there are exceptions to that, and some affordable housing developers will produce those projects, but not usually at the same scale. So, I would say that those programs, in some cases, if they're done right, the assumptions work, have been very successful, but they've also tend to be controversial. Developers, for obvious reasons, don't like them. And they can stop market rate production if left in place under some previous assumptions that have changed over time. But to answer your question, yes, it is something that communities frequently look at, and you have to look at it at the time of an upzone to be legally compliant and not have, like an adverse-taking type of situation.
Thank you for that insight, I appreciate it.
So, the only thing I'll add is Burlington certainly has inclusionary zoning, South Burlington has inclusionary zoning. As Jeff said, the calibration is really important. We often sort of think that, you know, developers are making a ton of money, and it's really easy for them to absorb, let's say, 20% affordable. That's not necessarily the case. So, it can be, it can be difficult to achieve. It certainly is something that makes sense to look at when, when we are allowing our height to go higher, because we are basically saying right now, you can do more housing than we could have before. It's, it is tricky for a lot of reasons, and I think the state made it pretty simplistic in terms of another height, not a percentage, just another story of height. You could stay that simplistic and go two stories, there's really no reason not to think about it in that way. But it is, it costs more, certainly. And the other challenging part is the whole point of inclusionary is intentionally combined. So, you have affordable units within a new building that has market rate units as well. For the affordable houser folks, that can be difficult, only because it's, we would have to manage that affordability here, in-house. We would have to make sure on an annual basis, those affordable units remain accessible to affordable folks. Whereas, the affordable houser folks, when they've got a whole building, they're managing the whole building, and it's just, can work a little bit more easily that way. So, lots of things to think about, but an excellent question and conversation along with this question about more height.
So, Regina, a follow-up on that then, and I appreciate Finn bringing it up. So, in talking about like, let's just say we were to say as a city, we were going to throw in an extra bonus floor into the mix, right? Would you actually see, I mean, do you see right now this one story, let alone if we were to make it say two stories, is that an, do you believe that for developers, that is being seen as an incentive?
Inclusionary is probably not seen as an incentive by developers. It is a requirement. A bonus story, I think they probably look at it as an incentive a little bit more, because if they can make it pencil, they'll do it. If they can't make it pencil, they won't, and they don't have to. So, to Jeff's point, it would not prevent the development from happening altogether.
Yeah. Thanks.
How long does the affordability bonus last? In other words, is it five years, 10 years, perpetuity, et cetera?
That's a good question.
So, as the state wrote it in the Home Act, it is not in perpetuity. That is, I don't remember the exact number, I think it was like, I think it was 20, 25 years. It is something that I can look up.
Yeah, and the perpetual affordability is a question right now in a couple of different programs. The CHIP program, the infrastructure program for housing, that is not a permanent affordability requirement. And I think it's a really interesting and tough question when you start to look at intentionally putting public dollars into a project, should it be permanently affordable? There's a lot of reasons why it should, so that you can maintain that over time, but we're also at a point in time where it's really difficult to build. And so, anything we can do to help influence that could be a positive. But there is a lot of good debate on that, all those sides of that question.
Yeah, if I could just add something for context, there was a discussion, I think it's called Bay Ridge, the development on Shelby Road. The quota, the bedroom unit was $660,000 to build, I mean, you'd be realistic about costs.
Well, the other part that we need to be realistic about is the fact that last time we opined about how many stories anything was going to be, or how many buildings that we thought as a planning commission could be built, we lowballed it on alternative, what is referred here as alternative zero, that we actually, I think, voted on it at some point in the last few months to do that. So, I will disagree with Finn that we promised anybody, we didn't promise anything other than saying that we thought that alternative zero might be viable. But we, the planning commission, are restricted by what the council decides on how the building height shall be. They have control over building heights, not us. We can propose something, but they are the guardians of how high we go.
I think that'd be okay with the recommendation.
I didn't say that we couldn't recommend, but it's, you know, it's, you know, we have been overridden in the past when it came to land development code. We had proposed possibly, I think, five or six, you know, probably 10, 15 years ago, and the, what would be the trustees at the time decided that four was the max. They got pressure from the community and made that proposal, and it stuck in the land development code. So, yes, we're talking about possibly changing that, given current pressures. But yes, everything has the pencil, so.
So, with that, I'm sorry, Marcus, I can only see you. Amber, do you have any other thoughts before we, let's say, open it up to members of the public who are in attendance?
I'm good, Elijah, thanks.
All right. So, for those folks in the room, and anyone who's online, if there are folks online, maybe we'll alternate between in-person and virtual, but maybe start with someone, if there's anyone, member of the public who would like to comment on the current topic of discussion, please come up to the table, to the microphone, state your name for the notes, and share your thoughts. Please.
Something that occurred to me during this conversation is how good the view would be from the 10th story at Five Corners. And so, if one of these is 10 stories, and the next one's nine stories, the next one's eight stories, that might be some of the best views in the state. That, that's all.
Thank you for your comment.
Short and sweet.
Short and sweet.
Is there anyone, member of the public online, who has a comment, a question or clarification, thought they'd like to share?
Well, Elijah, just so you know, Elena from the planning commission is online as well, but she doesn't have her hand up.
Not seeing, yep. Jake?
Jack.
Jack, sorry.
No worries. I'll be brief. I am a, I'm not a resident of Essex Junction, but I kind of come with a little bit of like the state-level perspective. My day job is with Let's Build Homes as the policy director, and I'm speaking on behalf of them today. But as a housing advocate, I live next door in Burlington. I find that this, this whole proposal is really well-thought-out and really much-needed. And so my, my thought on this is that this would make my job as an advocate in Burlington specifically, not even at the state level, but there too, much easier at the kind of higher stories levels that you're considering, the eight to 10 range. I think transit-oriented development is, is something that is going to be critical for Chitting County as a whole and kind of connecting Essex Junction's housing needs with the rest of the region from an economic perspective. And I was chatting with some people today about the housing pressures of a best-case scenario for Beta's IPO this, earlier this week. You know, there's a lot of possibility in the future for the region, and I think Essex Junction has a chance to really be kind of a leader on this, especially with kind of maximizing the, the use of Pearl Street and the Village Center right along the bus route. I was on the number two today. You know, there's just so much possibility connecting the region. And that, that's it. I just, I want to say, I, I really think this is a great proposal. And I would like to be able to point to our city council at the work that, that you approve as we kind of redo our corridors, which we passed last year at four stories and has really yielded no interest at all. And I, and you know, I'm hoping that we come back in the next year or two and revisit that at an eight-to-10-story level to really pencil out the density that we're going to need to hit our housing target. So anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Jack. Appreciate your thoughts and joining us. Is there anyone else in person who has a thought they'd like to share?
Hi, my name's Brendan DeGraft. I live in Essex Junction. Me and my wife just bought our house this year. Just wanted to voice my support for the eight-to-10, similar to what Brian said. You know, if this is our opportunity to tackle the density problem, you know, we should go big and try to go all the way. And, you know, the worst that we can do is developers don't find that economically viable and, you know, I don't know specifically what goes into all that calculation, but, you know, more homes means, you know, we hit those targets. That's really what it comes down to. So, thank you.
Thank you, Brendan. Appreciate your comment. Is there anyone else online who would like to share or clarify anything?
I'm not seeing any other hands.
All right. Is there anyone else in person to share a comment?
Howdy, Jack Evans, coming at you from Local Motion, which is the statewide advocate for active and vibrant transportation, dipping our toes into transit. I'm also a, a once-resident of Essex Junction. My mom lives here. She used the fact that I came here to help fix the faucet earlier because I was already coming up to town. My brother and sister-in-law also live in the Brickyard area and they're raising their four-year-old and two-year-old right now. It's a city that, having lived in it and then moved back to Burlington, I can see myself moving back here, especially with the bold work that the city is doing in transportation and hopefully with housing. I support, of course, the adoption of the plan. I really do urge you to go beyond just the seven stories. It's kind of like you said, project costs, both of you said, I guess, it comes down to how the financials pencil out. Not every, not every building that gets built in an eight-story or a 10-story zone is going to be 10 stories. But it could be the difference between a parcel being zero stories and 10 stories. So if a project is either not going to happen or can happen with the assistance of an additional story or two, I think that that makes much more of an impact on affordability and housing and community vibrancy and economic solvency of our public services and the corridor support of transit. Because it, I get the pyramid idea and I, like, it would be cool to drive on, or take a bus maybe, on Pearl Street and see the density ramp up, but, I mean, aesthetically, we're talking about a couple of stories in that instance, and the impact of those stories is way greater for affordability and housing than it would be for aesthetics, frankly. So I support pushing for eight-to-10 stories with the adoption of this plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Jake, or Jack, rather. Check, not seeing any hands online. Is there anyone else in person? Comments, questions from the current subject of discussion? Please.
Hi, I'm Rachel MacLeod, and I just, as you were talking through the affordability housing and just the, I think of the missing middle, the workforce housing seems so important. I work in mortgages and we just see that average first-time homebuyer age continue to rise. You know, it's closer to 40 now. And these houses that they're buying, they're like 500 to $650,000 houses. Finding the ranch in Essex Junction for $425,000, that's like 1,200 square feet or less, is rare. And so I just think that's so crucial. And then I also think, you know, of our elderly who need to move down to a smaller house. So anyway, just while I think, you know, the subsidized housing and the perpetual affordability is also important, it seems like Vermont's really good at that, actually. And it just seems like now's the time to focus on that missing middle. So, that's all.
Thank you, Rachel. Your thoughts or sharings from the public? All right. Thank you all. With that, we can return back to your presentation, Jeff? Or Chris, I'm not sure which one of you's up there.
Yeah, Jeff has been screen sharing.
I got it. Just give it up one second here. Okay. Thank you for all those comments, really appreciate the participation. And let me just share my screen again. Okay, just a few more slides, and these will go through the right-of-way reconfigurations. First on Five Corners. So the framing question, should we modify right-of-way at Five Corners as recommended? Again, this is something that there will be some flexibility in the future to, you know, look at the design and potentially make some changes, but at a, at a high kind of conceptual level. And do the recommendations provide the right balance of improved pedestrian and bike experience while sufficiently addressing the concerns of vehicular traffic? So the, you know, the quintessential challenge working in Vermont downtowns is that the main street is--
One moment, hold on.
Sorry. I just want to point out that all of this work is going to be implemented, which is super valuable because it's making us look at both our public realm right-of-way area as well as the land, that the land development code regulations of more of the private side will, it will come into play. They are implemented in two completely different ways. What, what regulations we put into place in the land development code really will dictate the private side development and housing that we'll see. This whole realm of work is more within the city's purview of how we go about doing this and what work that we might do. So I'm just pointing that out before we get into this section because this is implemented in different ways and will ultimately be approved and moved forward in different ways, also with lots of other different feedback along the way. So just to, just to explain that, so these concepts are very much that conceptual.
So the, you know, the quintessential challenge of doing planning in Vermont downtowns is that often the main street or main streets is a state highway. In the case of Essex Junction, we have three of them. And for those that have been in the community for a while and you remember how bad the traffic used to be, and it really limited both the opportunities for development and, you know, space for pedestrians and bicyclists in Five Corners because we were having to accommodate and still to some extent do accommodate the region's traffic. And I would say with the development of the connector and changes in transportation patterns, new development, so on and so forth, we have an opportunity to capitalize more on the connector. The Five Corners Streetscape project that we did back in 2008, 2008 or so, I think that was around then, you know, for those reasons I just described, we couldn't touch curbs, we couldn't change anything. So we did add lighting and redid the signals and stuff, but it was parking neutral, so we didn't change any of the parking, we couldn't change travel lanes, and we couldn't change sidewalks. So essentially, most of the right-of-way continues to be used for cars. And in particular, the two places I think that we would otherwise have the opportunity to do that would be Park Street, whereas you approach Five Corners, there's four lanes, and then also on Main Street where you have three lanes, one headed towards Essex Town and the other two coming into Five Corners. So the previous planning efforts looked at closing Main Street, and certainly that could be an option. But I think in terms of whether to look at that, you have to consider not only the traffic and circulation, but can it be a successful pedestrian-only street? And certainly, we have Church Street as an example, but the reality is most of those pedestrian streets failed when they were developed on a perpetual basis. I also think the Meet Me on Main event showed that it can be very successful on an interim basis. And I will say, in the pretty limited engagement we did, we walked around and talked with all the business owners, it was just limited in the sense that this topic only came up with one person, I recall, a longtime business owner, you know, quite opposed to a permanent closure. So keep that for what it is. However, when we were coming up with the concept for the connector years ago, I'd always thought, well, if we had this other connection, then we wouldn't have to provide all these turning movements, we could sort of recapture some space for pedestrians, which helps us mitigate all of the traffic impacts as well. So this looks at how we could, kind of like what was done on Maple Street by changing the turning lane and adding the bike lanes. You could do that on some of these other legs in order to capture public space. And then you could close Main Street or events, maybe more of a seasonal thing or something in the summer that's a little bit longer term. But that's essentially a programming or management issue, it's not necessarily a design issue in the sense that you'd have to design it like a pedestrian mall, like Church Street, for it to be successful. So these look at the turning movements and where we could remove them. And we'll just start on Main Street. First, we were proposing removing the slip lane and doing some activation around the Veterans Park, which, you know, is a little bit isolated, a little bit removed from some of the other parts of the Village Center. And then you could remove this turning movement from Main Street on to Park Street, which would give you about 11 or so feet that you could add to the public realm, and I'll show you that in a moment. The other big move that you could do is on Park Street. So instead of going this way to Main, this would be removed, and you could take the lane that's in front of the Lincoln Inn and widen the sidewalks, which would really help with the redevelopment of it, have outdoor dining, slow and tame the traffic, and really emphasize the pedestrian environment. And then the connector would be there for those making those other movements. So this is kind of what we mean by capitalize on the connector. And then whenever, you know, there's a desire or need to close Main Street for events, I think that's absolutely something that could be in the toolkit of the community for activating the downtown. So this looks at one concept for the Main Street proposed lane reduction. And to Regina's point, you know, you don't have all the information when you're planning at this level. And what I would fully expect and what we've done of every Streetscape project we do is just a finer-grain level of engagement. We would, you know, likely do something like the design charrette, where we're getting hands-on with, with folks. But this looks at one option that would be sort of minimally disruptive because it's on one side of the street and there aren't plans to develop the pocket park. I see a hand up, which I'll just come to in one moment. But this would take out one of the lanes, so you'd have one lane in each direction and you could create this wide pedestrian promenade, which could have a bike facility and more public space for people while also taming the traffic. And then similarly, do that on the Memorial Way closure as well. And I think for those reasons, we're not recommending permanently closing Main Street. I think there is another layer of this where you could introduce some more design elements to make it feel like more of a pedestrian street, you know, commonly, or pedestrian or festival street, I should say, looking at things like curbless streets where you make it much more accessible for pedestrians and access to businesses, and some treatments that would sort of signify a special place but could accommodate cars when that's desirable and maybe when it's less viable as a pedestrian street and the winter and things like that. I'll pause there for a second and go to Brian, who has a question.
Yeah, thanks. I've been looking at this part of the proposal for a while. And I, full disclosure, I think I'm one of the, I think of the four quidendrants of Essex Junction, the one between Main and Park is probably the smallest in terms of residents. However, that's where I live. So I find Memorial Way super useful. So I'm wondering, A, how much we're really buying by, and I find it super useful because if you drive, if you're going to, say, City Hall and you're coming down Main Street, you use Memorial Way to get here. If you're coming down Main Street and you need to go to Park Street, better Memorial Way than making a right turn at Five Corners. So, so I guess my, and by the way, I do love the narrowing of Main Street and making it more accessible for cyclists. So I'm not, that's not my concern. I'm just wondering, how much are we buying by closing Memorial Way? And what is your proposal for, what is the resultant expectation for going from Main Street to Park Street there?
Can I just take one second and piggyback on that? Because Memorial Way is a giant slipway for the volunteers that come to the fire station that want to avoid Five Corners and get to the back parking lot in an emergency.
Yeah, fair enough. I mean, I, I think like any move you make in terms of urban design, there's always trade-offs. So it would undoubtedly create some different movements in order to access different places. I think because of the connector and some of the other existing streets, you know, there would be certainly ways to access those points, but it would not be as convenient. And I think that would have to be weighed amongst the community in terms of that versus the benefits of, of doing something like this. I think, you know, it does, I think, create a bit more activity and presence for the park, which does not seem to be maybe used as much as it could be. It could also be something that is just done during, say, the summer months, and it could be open during the rest of the year. So I don't think we're envisioning this as like a permanent thing or as a temporary programming element. And that might also allow some opportunity to test it and see if it makes sense or if it's causing, you know, negative impacts that make it not worth it.
Heard correctly, Brian also had a question about how you would get from Main to Park. Is that, was that, was that the question?
Yeah, that, that's a route that I take all the time. If I come down to, if you're coming down to Ness, you park on Main Street. And now I gotta, and now to go home, you either gotta make a U-turn in, from those diagonal, from those diagonal parking, or, you know, or I take, or I take Memorial Way to go back on Park. So, and I love, and don't get me wrong, I love the connector. The connector is great for my neighborhood if you're going to Williston or coming from Williston, but it doesn't, but yeah, the connector doesn't help you get to-- but yeah, the connector doesn't help you get to City Hall from Main Street. Or the, or to try to get Tim's support here, or the UDT.
Well, I was just gonna point out that we've had some waterline work being done over here on Park Street, which has closed the road and forced the traffic onto the connector, and we have noticed the severe limitations of the traffic signals with that roadway as we try and push more traffic onto it.
Yeah, and I agree with what you said, that, to vis-à-vis, there's always gonna be trade-offs, I was just trying to understand what the trade-offs were. I'm certain that, I'm certain that, you know, that I'm one of the few lovers of Memorial Way in Essex Junction, to be clear, so.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's fair. I mean, I do think, you know, if you were coming up Main and you wanted to go to the fire station, you'd go this way, right, which is longer, and in an emergency would not be ideal. I certainly appreciate the comments about some of the limitations of the connector and turning movements, particularly if there are major changes. I think for those reasons, that's, that's one of the major factors why I don't think closing Main Street long-term would necessarily be the best way to go, in addition to potential impacts to business owners. So I think, you know, that's, in some respects, why we propose something that, you know, has some flexibility and isn't meant to be necessarily a permanent improvement or block that off permanently. So, it might be something that we test, we could also, you know, maybe do a little bit of light traffic analysis, or ask some thoughts from the city engineer or something to take a look at that, but appreciate those comments, and, you know, something we'll have to work through, for sure.
Jeff, I have a question for you. You're showing possible closing of Memorial Way. When you put the food trucks there, were there any questions from the business community that you interacted with as to plopping the competition in the front, on the front porch, as opposed to down the street? I mean, some of these brick and mortar people might be a little testy about having the competition literally in their front yard.
Yeah. Well, I have not dealt with that issue relative to this plan, but I think, you know, back to Regina's point, this is probably something that would require some outreach to the business and property owners or the stakeholders within the directly affected area, which is something I would definitely recommend. But I have had that issue come up in other communities, it's really interesting, there's kind of two schools of thought, one is the competition kind of piece, and certainly that's a perspective I've heard from business owners, when we have put in like food truck ordinances and things like that. You know, on the other hand, anything that brings people down and creates more activity, you know, might create business opportunities for other businesses beyond that as well. So, again, that kind of goes back to some of the trade-offs, but those are conversations that I think we would have to have before implementing it, and kind of see where that goes, and, you know, what the, what the desire is based on the consideration of those trade-offs. But that is definitely an important consideration and one I've heard, and that's also can come up too with things like farmers' markets and other events, where folks feel like there's competition or it's taking parking and things like that.
Sorry, can I, I want to ask, first of all, I don't think I said it in the beginning, I just want to say this whole process from when you started, Jeff, to now, is really quite exemplary, and it's given us the opportunity to really think about what we want the future to look like. I think it's been a great opportunity all along, and I congratulate everybody who's been working on this. In terms of the traffic revisions, I was looking at this and thinking about Route 2 for the bus, and it doesn't impact the bus movements for Route 2, but I don't know the other bus routes that we still have in Essex Junction, and whether or not that was considered in any of these scenarios.
The, so the only other bus route right now in Essex Junction is the, I don't know if it's still called 10, but it's a loop that, it's a service that, it's a one-way loop that goes to the town, and it goes in a clockwise direction. I, yeah, I do not think this would, this would impact, this closure would not impact the operations of that route.
Okay, and then just...
Actually, sorry, it's not this closure, but this, this term restriction would not impact.
So, just quickly, I was thinking about it, for Meet on the Main, what happened to Route 2 during Meet on the Main?
Route 2 had to reroute during the event. I think they went around, I think they went straight through the intersection to Maple, and then turned left on the Crescent Connector, so the railroad streets made a little zigzag and made it up.
Okay.
The other bus is...
Yes, now it's called the 4.
The number 4, Essex Center, and it goes from, it goes down Maple Street, so I don't, yeah, I don't think it would be impacted, but certainly we would look at that if it goes any further.
But in general, I, you know, I think these scenarios, from my point of view, make sense, forgetting about Memorial Way for a second, but I think the traffic patterns, I think, make sense to me.
Yeah, when I'm looking at, I did look at the traffic analysis that was done around the permanent Main Street closure, which is interesting, but the movement that I have the most concern about, just some of you are thinking about a permanent or longer-term closure, is this turn here that you'd have to make to go Route 15? I just feel like that has the potential to, because people are having to go left here to back up. The traffic analysis that was done a while ago did not seem to indicate that that would be an issue, but I certainly have my reservations about it. So that's why I think this proposal, and this could be something that could be tested too fairly easily, we have worked with communities to test lane closures, and so that is something we might be able to look at, I don't know.
Not to try to dwell on this, but what Jeff is referring to, the traffic analysis that was done, a while back, as a part of Design Five Corners, DuBois and King, the engineering consulting firm, did a traffic, they ran a micro-simulation model for what this would look, what the Five Corners area would look like if it was turned into a four-corner intersection with the Main Street being pedestrianized. There were some assumptions in there that, you know, are no longer accurate, it assumed three lanes on Maple Street, it didn't have the geometries of the, of the railroads in there, so I, it's, yeah, without a turn lane, there are just a lot of assumptions that we don't believe to be accurately reflecting what is there now, now that the Crescent Connector has been completed, but that's what Jeff is referring to.
Thanks, Chris. Marcus?
So, just going back, I'll just reiterate that I think in looking at your recommendations, I'm with you, I, however, every pathway except for that one coming from Main Street on Lincoln, it's the only one that's not answered by some other easy route solution. So that's the only one that I'm concerned about, but I am open to testing, so I'm, I am open for a short period of saying, okay, let's put a couple of food trucks there for whatever, you know, a short period of time, just to see what that, you know, kind of experience it a little and then work with that, but that aside, the other thing that came to mind for me just now was, when we were talking about, and this, this is related, when we talked about the pocket park, I remember some of that discussion that we had, and we kind of did some planning around that, or at least, I think some of the discussion around it was, we were doing something and keeping in mind that there was a possibility for a future that included that park being larger. Now we're talking about making a decision that that's not gonna happen, which I'm okay with, but it also then makes me wonder about whether or not we should, as another conversation on another day, have a, have a conversation about then, what are we doing over there in the pocket park, along with what's happening along Main Street? In a new dialogue because of the fact, if we're gonna come to this new decision, that will mean that there's no future for Four Corners versus Five. So, I just want to put that out there for staff consideration for future.
Appreciate that, and I absolutely agree. So this, yeah, this concept just looks at the same, similar lane reduction on Park, where right now we have four lanes, and they are planning to redevelop the site that's associated with the Lincoln Inn. We talked with the property owner about that, they were very favorable to this, thought it gave them a nice frontage, mitigated some of the traffic, opportunities for outdoor dining, without eating into their site, per se, so they were quite favorable on this, and we would have the opportunity, I think, to incorporate a really high-quality bike facility in that as well. So, engagement takeaways, would folks support these sort of vehicle turn movement reductions, for lack of a better term? For the in-person engagement, and I had many of these conversations at the Main Street event, very positive, 98%, yeah, small sample size, 43 total votes. Online, again, it was mixed, about 43% yes, 17% neutral, and 40% no. And again, you know, as part of the implementation effort in experiences, you know, some, some more detailed engagement with all of those that own and operate businesses and own properties on those affected frontages, should absolutely be engaged at a more detailed level. So this is just showing the Meet Me on Main events, wow, that was super fun, amazing job by everyone involved putting that on, it was so fun to come back and see Main Street used that way, everyone seemed to be having a really fun time, and, you know, one of the things we always advise communities, if you're gonna do something like this, go big and make it awesome, and Essex certainly did that with this event, it was fantastic, so congrats to everyone. Looking at balancing our feedback and pros and cons, and, you know, understanding we might be able to test this stuff and get feedback, you know, before we make some big moves, if that ends up being part of the strategy. So, some of the pros, you know, when we're doing Streetscape projects, sometimes we just look at, you know, how much of the right-of-way are we allocating towards pedestrian versus bicyclists, and, you know, if you have unlimited space, you can have a car street and a bike ped street, and it's not that much of a conflict, but in the Five Corners, you know, we're pretty constrained, and we're having traditionally to use most of that right-of-way for vehicles. So this would expand space for pedestrians and bicyclists, reduce traffic impacts, which speed is really one of the biggest factors, not only for safety, which it is, but for noise, and just sort of quality of the urban experience, and then it does enhance some of the connectivity. Concerned challenges, some of these were brought up, you know, unclear if the Crescent Connector can handle the true traffic volume, you know, there are probably some limitations to that. Concerned that there isn't a sufficient bike community to justify reducing the traffic in bike lanes, or traffic lanes to make head bike space, I think that's always kind of a chicken and egg thing, you know, or people not biking because there isn't a safe place to bike. I know, for me personally, I'm not a big urban biker because of the danger associated with it, and when you can provide facilities where kids and seniors and everyone in between feels comfortable, that is where you really can start to move the needle. And then, let me just finish the slide here, and then I'll go to you, Marcus. Mitigation strategies, again, completing more traffic study, lane closures, using some temporary measures to test it, and we could provide examples to that, if that's desirable. Yeah, calibrating the light timing and turning movements, that's really important, and of course, we all kind of like have the, the light cycle of Five Corners, I feel like it's like embedded into my, whatever. And I think with these turning movements, it would be interesting to see how you could change that, maybe there's some more simultaneous movements, both for vehicles and for pedestrians, which now is very safe, but it shuts down the whole intersection for that, so there might be some opportunities there, and then, again, just testing some of this stuff before major money is spent, if that's the direction. And Marcus, go to you.
Quick question, Jeff, on your experience around this, because, you know, what you were just saying about cyclists, because I heard this recently from someone who was talking about the fact that, look, we, the community has spoken that they want a multimodal city, but in terms of when one can bike, it's half the year, it's not all year. So what is your experience in other communities like ours that have the same kind of, you know, seasonal change, and, because I know that there are communities like ours who have already gone those extra steps, created that multimodal system, what has that experience been like? I mean, if you can give me some insight on impacts, pros, cons, around that, that thinking?
Yeah, good question. I think it really depends on the context and what the goals are, and what the competing interests are. I think, you know, there's always different opportunities to enhance biking and walking in different ways. If you have unlimited space, then, you know, you aren't constrained by that, and I think it's not really a competition between modes. In other situations, and certainly on less-volume streets, you can do things like shared-use paths and things that mix modes and are very efficient from a space perspective, they maybe aren't the ideal for all of the different modes individually, but they can accommodate it, and I think some examples are that, are the multi-use path on Brickyard Road, and then the multi-use path that's being planned down on the far end of Pearl Street, you know, which, again, maybe isn't providing the best facility, but it's providing a safe facility, and that, I think, should encourage some people in those areas to utilize them. You know, definitely appreciate your thoughts about winter use and things like that. I think fortunately Essex has a really good street grid, and a lot of the streets are slow enough that people feel comfortable biking on them, and there's a culture of walking within the community, so I think those are positives. The last thing I'll say is, sometimes when you're in a very urban environment with a lot of retail and the demands or competition for space of the right-of-way is limited, bike, you know, dedicated bike facilities sometimes aren't the best use of space, but by and large, I think in the case of Essex Junction, we've given up so much space to the cars, and now we have different tools with which to manage that and different opportunities. I don't see those as competing as much, and I think to your point, the community would like to see it, and I think that's one of the best assets about Essex, it's very walkable, it's what, four square miles, you can get anywhere you want to be on walking and biking, but the arterials that are traditionally have large volumes of traffic are really the barrier to that. So, I feel like at the point we're at now, we can do that and have our cake and eat it too, but before the connector, we really couldn't, and before some of these new concepts for Route 15, for bike facilities, you know, we weren't able to accommodate those traditionally either, so.
Thanks, appreciate it.
A really short response to that as well. You know, the point of a transit-oriented development plan is to enable a future where more people can live without a car or with fewer cars in their household, but the thing with cycling, even if you don't, even if someone is not a year-round cyclist, having access to, having the ability to bike places and having access to good transit is, makes it much more tolerable to not have a car than just having transit alone, because biking and transit just specialize in different trip distances, and, and also, yeah, even if you, if you can't bike all the time, it's just, yeah, it just makes life easier enough that maybe it would tip the scale for some people to choose not to, to have a car and to require all the space and right-of-way that's, and parking that's needed for that.
So, Brian, before you, I just want to build on what Chris was saying. I'm a biker, I used to bike to Burlington for work many years ago, even when it was snowing. I don't do that anymore since I don't work, but I bike recreationally, and there's a famous line in Field of Dreams, "If you build it, they will come," okay? If you don't have it, people are not gonna bike. If you start producing bike lanes, people will use them. And one of the difficulties we have in Chittenden County is the regionality of bike lanes, we don't have connectivity between the various places. So Pearl Street doesn't, it's starting to, it doesn't connect very well with Winuski, same with Williston, if you go across the bridge, you can get onto the bike path, but it only goes so far. If you produce safe zones for people to bike, it makes it easier for people to bike, so just my personal point of view.
Brian, do you have a thought on the same subject, or?
Well, I have, I mean, really what I was gonna say is, we have two pretty dedicated bike commuters in the... Well, I have, um, I mean, really what I was going to say is we have two pretty dedicated bike commuters in the room. If I'm, and a representative from local motion who might be able to speak to, um, you know, I don't want to put you on the spot, Jack. Um, but, uh, um, who, who might speak to the year round, um, uh, who might speak to, um, hopefully, well, I expect to agree with Scott, with Scott's opinion here, which that if we build it, they will come. Um, I know that I, uh, um, as a, as a retired triathlete, I don't ride in January, but I see people doing it. So to say that we shouldn't build it because no one's riding in the winter, I think is, um, I, I would defer to the, 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 the actual commuters in the room, um, you know, and perhaps a professional if they're willing to speak to that.
I, I appreciate that. I, I do want to say that I, I do want to be mindful that I'm not, my question is, isn't taking us off task and keeping us on. Because I know, as Regina said, that we're going to have, you know, with any of this portion, there's going to be more dialogue, more conversation. Um, so, and I'd love for all these members to keep coming back to these conversations because this transformation is going to happen over years, not just, you know, over this one dialogue. So, um, but not to cut anybody off, I want people to have their chance to speak. I just, I also just don't want to derail the whole thing for, for, for this at the moment, if that, if that's cool, so.
I think, uh, Jack, because you have been invited, if you have a succinct statement you would care to make, we would love to have it. Yeah, and then Marcus, yes, let's move on, um, because we, this will be an ongoing conversation.
Yeah. So the year round benefits of cycling infrastructure, I, I mean, there, there are many. Like we've said, if you build it, they will come. People are beginning to winter cycle more and more often. It's actually one of the number one questions that we are fielding as an organization is, what are you recommending? What routes should we be taking? Um, and we do have an issue with plowing and winter maintenance and like salting. But that is solved by separated and protected infrastructure. When it's just bike lanes on the side of a road, those become snow pile lanes in the winter. When you have separated shared use paths or two-way cycle tracks, those are usable year round. Um, many of the benefits of cycling infrastructure are also not just for bikes, they are traffic calming. Uh, most of the time on Vermont's narrow roads, adding cycle infrastructure narrows the road visually and physically. And that causes slower traffic for everybody, which in this instance is a good thing. It's not like congestion, it's just slower, more aware travel. Um, and as somebody who just this summer was able to sell my car and go fully carless and is on, I think, my fifth year now of full bicycle commuting. Um, it really is true that just a little bit of improved infrastructure, being able to get to the core destinations that you need to get to, really does help. I will say in Burlington, I can benefit from CarShare. So it's, winter cycling is helped by those extra options like better transit and car light opportunities like CarShare. I think that's all I'll say. Thank you.
Hey, great discussion. Um, last thing I will just say real quick, um, kind of related to your question, Marcus. Um, I would say more often than not, if we can do it now, we're designing bike facilities at sidewalk grade and sort of integrated with the sidewalk. One, it's safer, but the second is when there's not cyclists, it's, and, and not that it becomes necessarily part of the sidewalk, but again, it buffers, uh, the traffic a little bit and it feels a little bit more like one space versus a bike lane. When it's not used, it's just sort of there by itself, or to the comment that was just made, is full of snow. So these are becoming more, um, the standard, I say, when, when you're doing a capital project and making that kind of investment. Okay, so discussion, should we modify right of way, five corners is recommended. Um, again, we don't, I don't know if we need to make a, a definitive decision on all of the elements, but in concept, the idea of, uh, capitalizing on the connector in this way and, you know, looking at Main Street as more of a, a programming element, uh, for intermittent closures. Um, mitigation efforts and phasing sufficient to minimize risk, uh, understanding there might be some more analysis needed. And then is there anything we haven't discussed yet in terms of information that we would need to include this in the plan at this point?
Question, um, since some of our, our main artilliers are state roots, how much play do we have since they are state roots?
Uh, I will, go ahead, Chris.
Class one road to s- uh, city has, uh, control over the design of them. Uh, the state, uh, uh, retains the responsibility for paving, um, but the, yeah, the, the, the city can make changes.
If they get here.
They would likely weigh in though, for sure, but yeah, we do, we do have the, the control over the design of it.
So I know like we're pushing for, uh, more like biking, which is good and I do like. But if, let's say, for example, a snowstorm comes in and covers the sidewalks with like six inches of snow, then you're going to have to have like plowers come out and plow that thing. And if they don't get there early enough, then the people that do take bikes to work are not going to be able to do that because of the snow on the sidewalks.
Yeah, and so absolutely, from what we've heard already tonight, like the, the seasonality and where we live on the globe is a factor that we would need to consider in any future planning projects. But it does sound like that there are ways that we could mitigate that. But certainly that's a, a facet that we would absolutely want to consider.
Thank you.
Um, I guess at this point, um, maybe we could take the same approach. I think commissioners and counselors have had the opportunity to, uh, share thoughts or ask clarifying questions. And we just do a double check with either of those groups before, again, opening it up. If there are members of the public that have, uh, thoughts or discussion specifically on this right of way modification, uh, piece of the plan, uh, counselors or commissioners.
Well, one of the things that the, the, the Park Street right of way alteration has brought to, to mind is that I remember that we negotiated getting more sidewalk, so pushing the buildings back from, um, the property line so as to have the sidewalks that are available. Um, so perhaps we need to do that event of pushing the sidewalks or pushing the buildings back from the, the property line, um, in our new land development code coming up and get, just get that right out there. Um, that allowing that, that pushback of the building would open up the streets a little bit. Um, and give the certain individual there on, on Park Street some, uh, free, free park sidewalk that Park built tables on if they wanted. Um, of course, now everything's negotiable. But, uh, you know, that, that would, it seems to be, would that entail getting the same effect? Um, I'm, I'm looking at, at my Tuesday drive, okay? And that, uh, the Crescent Connector failed, uh, when it got to, uh, to Maple Street. Um, but, uh, you know, I also saw that, uh, with all the roadwork being done on Essex Road in Williston and all the way down to Industrial Drive, um, has really pressured Park Street. Um, that, uh, my dear husband keeps telling me that his, his try, uh, dr- attempt to drive over to, uh, Home Depot and some of the other places has been, um, frustrating and that everything is parked up. It's literally made Park Street become a parking lot, um, because of the construction, um, over on Williston. So, but I know that from sitting at Rockies at Iroquois and, uh, Park Street, that that road needs to have a turning lane at that intersection. Um, that, uh, that backs things all the way up to the connector, to Maple Street when, when things are, well, all the way back to the dam, depending on your point of view and which direction you're going in. So I'm thinking we need to put in, not necessarily on this, but definitely in perhaps in conjunction or after this, um, and looking at how our roads are. Um, and do, does it really let people walk, bike or drive, um, without being frustrated? I know frustrated drivers try, start looking for bypasses around five corners, which is not what we, where we want to go again. But, um, let's, let's, let's try to be smart about this and get that smart growth in. Thanks.
Counselors online that have any?
Nothing here.
With that, uh, is there anyone, any member of the public that would like to comment or add to the discussion on the right of way modification piece? All right. Great. And Jeff, I think it's back to you for just the last few slides.
Okay, yep, thank you for those comments, uh, and the follow up on what Diane was describing. I think she, she hit all the topics, uh, on the head, so to speak. Um, and the issue of whether to, you know, have a lane reduction and expand the sidewalk or set the building back, I think those are the two options. So you could require a setback. I, I agree, that's been a great design feature of those other new buildings. Um, but you also might be able to require frontage improvements as well, which could expand the sidewalk too as part of that. So we'll, uh, we'll take those comments in and see how we can, um, try to help answer those questions in the future. So last, uh, section is on public space, um, framing questions, which public space improvements and programs should move forward? And are there additional ones that should be prioritized? Uh, so this one is, uh, looking at putting a mural on the fire station and, um, I believe the city has funding for it. And, um, murals are a great way to express your community identity and add vibrancy to the public realm. Um, the fire station has these nice kind of bays that I think would lend themselves. Again, this is just a photo sim, so who knows what it will look like eventually, but, um, big opportunity, I think, to have some near-term impact, um, there on the fire station. Excuse me?
Just to be clear, so far we have funding for design, not implementation, but.
Right, sorry, thank you Regina for clarifying that. Um, and we have done, we have done a number of mural programs in communities, um, that have been successful. And, you know, it needs to be done thoughtfully, but, um, but exciting and can build momentum. Uh, so Railroad Avenue, you know, has, uh, traditionally been sort of the festival street or it has been used for that, for the block party. There was, uh, this was the first streetscape project that, uh, we did back in twenty, I don't know, two thousand three, two thousand four. Um, and if you recall, the travel lanes used to be like forty-two feet wide collectively. So we expanded the sidewalk, um, on the building side and add a little bit of green space and trees. There was a farmer's market there for a little while as well. Um, the idea here would be to put in some simple kind of, uh, structures that, um, could support parking, you know, during non-events or just be covered, um, but could be used for community events that wouldn't necessarily even require closing the street. Um, you know, we have worked in other communities that have structures like this and have done farmer's markets and it just kind of adds, uh, another element to it by having sort of more of a dedicated structure for weather protection and things like that. Um, so again, like with everything, there are trade-offs and we would have to consider that in the next round of engagement, which would include more, uh, discussion with business owners in the community. And again, it, it comes down to not just developing this, but how it gets programmed. And ultimately we want it to be successful, not just kind of a design exercise. So more work on this, but I think this could be a nice compliment to, uh, the events and stuff if that does long-term shift to, to Main Street. And I think the recent events show that it can be very successful there. So in terms of the engagement, um, again, a bit of a mix and a, uh, divide between the in-person and online. In-person, uh, very supportive, between eighty and a hundred. There were some cautions and you see some of that here on the Veterans Memorial, um, food truck space that we talked about, uh, concerns around noise, um, uh, and just limiting the circulation. The other categories for in-person got a hundred percent, again, small sample size. Um, online, it was more mixed, um, sorry, uh, there is a comment here about having a farmer's market, which again, there used to be. Um, this one, uh, has a comment saying five, uh, corner is not a place for a park, too loud, poor air quality and inadequate parking, completely unattractive area. But I think maybe they, that's not the five corners that I experience, uh, currently. Um, certainly there have been those elements and there are still some of those elements, but it seems to be drastically improving and I think we have more opportunities to do that. But anyways, all of the thoughts are valid, um, not wanting to invest on pocket parks. Um, the one with the food trucks, uh, concerned about budget impacts and, uh, trying to just cram more stuff into the five corners. Uh, murals, um, kind of a split between support and neutral of around twenty percent, forty-eight percent were cautious, uh, wanting to support local artists and, uh, concern around doing nice things and having it ruined by folks through tagging and things like that. And I think that is the end of the presentation. We can pause there, see if there's any thoughts on this one. Um, but again, more work to be done to move these concepts forward and really give them the full consideration and attention and engagement that they would need to advance to design and implementation. Turn it back over to you, Chair.
Thanks, Jeff. Are there any, uh, counselors or commissioners that, uh, have thoughts, um, or questions about this last piece? In terms of the public space investments?
Nothing on the line.
Thank you. Uh, any members of the public that would like to share or have thoughts? All right, with that, we can move on. Thank you, Jeff.
Okay. Well, thank you so much. Really great discussion. Appreciate, appreciate all the thoughtful comments. We'll kind of summarize those and follow up if we have any more information to provide, but, um, great discussion. So in terms of next steps, um, you know, just finalizing any revisions to the plan, which I feel like we've had a, a good period of time to vet that with the public and appreciate everyone that's participated. We really can't be successful without that level of input and appreciate those that came out tonight to provide comments. We are working on the land development code updates, um, and, and will certainly incorporate the feedback we got this evening. Um, but that is kind of our next step. We're anticipating, uh, working on that over the winter and, um, likely adoption in the spring or early summer and wrapping up the project by the middle of next year. So I think that is all we had for you. Thank you, and I will turn it back over to the Chair.
Thank you, Jeff. So I know in the memo that there was at least the possibility of further discussion and, uh, possible recommendations, um, from the council, or not, to the council, by the commission. Um, and then even the possibility of, uh, a vote by the council. Uh, before moving forward with that, I do just want to take a kind of a pulse check with the collective group, also recognizing the time and, uh, additional, um, business items for the commission to consider, uh, if we just kind of see how people are doing and whether, moving forward, uh, with additional discussion towards, uh, the possibility of making a recommendation by the commission tonight, is something we want to tackle or put in our next engagement in December? Do it all shadow one.
I guess I have a question for Chris, since you wrote the memo, which is if we adopt the plan, the TOD plan, uh, as discussed, um, what does that? And I assume the, the LDC changes would indicate where certain things happen. And I'm trying to get a sense of if we adopt the plan, does that lock us into anything or we have flexibility? My, my concern, just I'll give you my personal feeling. I was at two of the meet, two of the engagement processes and there was a lot of discussion about height. And there seemed to be, as this indicates in the results of the data here, seemed to be an indication that people were not opposed to taller buildings. From my point of view, I think that at least in the downtown center, Village Center, whatever we want to call it, there needs to be some clear thinking about where that would be. And I know we had some discussion about it this evening, that it wouldn't be where their historical buildings, it wouldn't necessarily be on Railroad Avenue. But by adopting the plan, are we locked in or is the LDC still give us the opportunity to decide where those heights would be?
So the, the code amendments, which is still within the scope of this project and the consultants are, are able to help with, is, you know, is there to provide the nuances of, of height regulation. I, I think what, this, this plan is meant to provide a general high-level guidance as to how to approach the rest of, you know, the code amendments. And that's, that's the high-level kind of guidance that's, that we're, that we're looking for. I don't think we, I mean, I guess Regina could, could chime in as well, I guess, as to how locked in we are, you know?
Yeah. I mean, so the plan itself, it is a plan and it's not even necessarily your comprehensive plan, which would maybe have a little bit more teeth to it, but either way, it's a plan. The regulation itself is the Land Development Code and that's what will be more specific. The Land Development Code, any amendments that happen with that require Planning Commission public hearings, then it passes on to the council and the council public hearings. So there's still a lot of process on the back end of that. What would be helpful is if we have guidance and if it's a range in certain areas, that's, that's fine. If it's a specific number in certain areas, that's great. At the end of the day, a number needs to be chosen so that we know ultimately what goes in the Land Development Code. The more we can get to consensus on that now, the better, but there is another process. And more importantly, the next process brings in parameters that help address some of the concerns, like a step, you know, a higher up step back as you get further back from the sidewalk, those kinds of things.
Right, right.
But if we don't have a direction, it's very hard to build a code.
Thank you.
I would like to add on to that, because some people are like alternative one and I'm seeing people like that alternative two. So I feel like we should, it doesn't have to be now, but I should say that we should come up with a alternative that doesn't conflict with each other so that we can move forward in this process.
Well, sorry, go ahead.
No, I was just gonna, Amber's had her hand up.
Amber, please.
I'm not sure if this is helpful or not, but I just want to make sure that the Planning Commission understands that the City Council does not expect you to make a decision tonight. We recognize that there's a lot on the table and fully expect that you're probably going to need another meeting to have this conversation amongst you guys and to then bring a recommendation to us. So this was, and this was an opportunity for the three of the boards to get the same presentation instead of having three separate meetings, which I think is probably appreciated by Jeff to begin with and city staff, I'm sure. But I, but I definitely do not expect that you're going to make a decision tonight and we're not going to make a decision tonight, as it says, it's almost nine o'clock at night, to be honest. So I hope that helps frame your guys' thought process. Yep.
Marcus, were you gonna?
Good for now. Thank you. She said exactly what needed to be said and, but I really do appreciate this dialogue. It's been very good tonight, but I do look forward to the recommendations coming to us.
So I have a question. The memo suggests that we adopt, and I'm going to suggest that we accept the report as opposed to adopting and endorsing at this point in time. I think we need to discuss if that's real, as a board or a commission, is that really what we, where we want to go and how we want to go? I'm willing to accept the report because that's kind of standard MO, is you accept a report. Not, not sending negative comments at you, Jeff, it's just it's a matter of semantics. You've been there, you know how this works. So, because at this point, I don't know that we have one missing member and it'd be nice to have all of us have this discussion going forward.
I'm okay with that.
Yeah. Okay. So noted. So with that, I think that from everything that I'm hearing, we can, again, thank you Framework Jeff for the presentation. We will, as the Planning Commission in our December meeting, plan to discuss accepting or adopting, we'll figure out the language that we want to use in terms of how we will move it forward to council. And we will also see if, as part of that, passing the baton, we may be able to provide some specificity around some of the key parts of the plan that were presented on tonight, understanding that then council will do their own process, have their discussion, and go from there. But I think with that, unless Chris and Regina has anything else we need to do on business item number A or 5A around the transurban development presentation, we can call it for tonight.
Do we need to move to accept the report?
I think that's for our next meeting.
No, do we need to move to accept the report tonight?
We could do that.
Just to have it in the minutes.
I think we indeed could indeed, should indeed.
You do.
Okay. Accept the report. It would allow staff to move forward with that. Our further discussion could then...
Sorry, Eddie got in the frame.
Okay. So we have a cat. Okay. That, they're always well-informed, you know. But anyhow, so it's, it's a matter of moving forward.
I guess, yeah, I'm unclear on the distinction between if we're going to, if we were to move to accept it, I don't know that there would be then any more discussion.
Oh, lots of discussion. Do you want to, do you want to endorse it? Do you want to adopt it?
Okay.
Okay.
I see what you, yeah, okay.
Okay. So.
My, my recommendation, the memo says the Planning Commission would endorse it. It's fine. Endorse, accept, whichever phrase you want to use. The intent should be, is the content, what you want the content to be right now? If it is not, then I would hold, talk at your next meeting, decide where you want to land and what the content of the document should say, and then take that action and then we can move it on to the council.
And so, so members of the commission, do, based on the content and the discussion that's been had here tonight, do you want to move it forward? And if someone does, you can make a motion.
I will say that the content has improved with further thought from what I last saw. Content from Framework. I guess I'm willing to endorse the majority of the content. I mean, first off, it's, it's got some errors in it that need to be corrected when it comes to spellings and that sort of thing. But the fact that it told, said that I was at a meeting and that I wasn't at is concerning. Okay, having content that's not correct. I wasn't in town on August 13th, so I couldn't very well be at the Maple Street Park. So, I mean, it's, can I adopt something that's got some occasional incorrect information? Well, yeah, okay. I mean, it's a...
I just recommend that you table it until that meeting. Because any hemming and hawing, honestly, I mean, this is just me saying this generally, like, we should take a pause, then consider it, and then at the next, in the next conversation, then move it forward. There's no, there's no push on, from us to have to do this now, so.
Motion to table the report until then.
Second.
All those in favor of tabling the report until the Planning Commission's next meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Motion passes. Thank you.
Can you hear me? Just to make sure that that's not going to hold up Jeff or the city's next steps.
Yep. Good.
No. Yeah, it won't, it won't hold us up. I mean, we've, we've already been working on the plan because there's a lot of things that are independent of like the height decision and things like that. So it's, it's not going to hold us up and we want everyone to take the time to feel comfortable with it, so we're impressed.
All right. Thank you. So then, moving on, business item 5B, the introduction of the 802 Homes, Homes For All Phase Project.
Yeah, this one's actually, I mean, really straightforward. I don't really have to say very much of it, it's all in the memo. But the 802 Homes project is something that's, the, the state of Vermont is working on. It's, and it aims to create a set of, basically, ready-to-build code-compliant home designs, ten of them, that fits the Vermont architectural vernacular and are kind of designed to fit the typical lot to enable infill housing. There are opportunities for members of, you know, City Council, the Planning Commission, and, and other interested parties to participate. And the, the first thing is actually going to be this virtual site tour that's coming up on November 18th. If you are, if there are any members of City Council or Planning Commission that are interested in attending, just send me an email to, to confirm some times that you're available. We need to, we'll have to nail down those time slots really soon because the state, like, the organizers are moving forward with this. But it's an exciting initiative and an opportunity for board members to be involved and eventually in the winter, an opportunity for the public at large to be involved in a design charade.
Could I just congratulate the city for securing this grant? I know it was competitive and I just want to congratulate you. I think it's a great opportunity. It's very exciting.
Thank you, Chris.
And to be clear, it's not really a grant. It's, but we are, we are participating, the city is participating as what they call a development-ready community partner to kind of shape what's, what's in there.
Do councilors or commissioners have any questions about initiative at this time? All right. Moving on, member updates.
I have just one thing to add. Four of us went to the Agency for Natural Resources Municipal Day. That was Chris and Mike from the city and Diane and I. And I just wanted to highlight one of the things that, by the way, all the presentations are on the A and R website. Happy to share the two presentations I thought were most useful. If people would like, I'm happy to share them. The one thing that I wanted to point out is the Climate Action Office at A and R is developing some guidelines for integration of climate change into municipal plans, comprehensive plans. So I made an initiative to talk to the head of that program at A and R to request the possibility of becoming pilot community and I connected her with Chris and Regina. So there will be, I think, three pilot communities selected next year for participating by integrating the climate change guidelines into whatever plans they're working on. So just FYI.
Thank you, Scott.
So last week, there was the regional housing. It was a virtual event. Chris and I were there. I'm not sure who else, you know, may have attended. But I will say that it's, it's always informative is to know what's going on in the region. And since we don't have a housing commission, we're it. But I will say what the, the presentation and the discussion at the end, dealing with Jericho, since it sounds like they are being active in tracking information for like their permits, they're tracking things as to how many permits and how they were taken out for and that sort of things, that they have an idea of how much, what's, what's being, what's being built and changed and whatever in their community. But they're also dealing with their energy committee and I know that you had sent out a note about something at the Dorothy Allen, and I didn't know if anybody had gone to that event or not. I did not. But I think looking to other communities as to what they're actively pursuing might help us, since we don't have the various components for committees and commissions. And since the comprehensive plan, we call for these pieces, we're it. So just thought, you know, it might be interesting to look at Jericho and see what they, they're up to. She sounded, the presenter sounded very knowledgeable and whatnot as to what, what they were doing. I forget who, who she was, but she was... I'm hoping that maybe they'll send out some minutes.
Thank you, Diane. With that, do we have any staff updates?
Not in addition to it.
The whole day. All right. Well, with that, look, at least, do we, should we let the councilors adjourn first?
Can I get a motion to adjourn?
I move that the City Council adjourn.
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
No, no, no nays. That one never gets a nay, so.
So similarly, we get a motion for the council, or the...
I move that we adjourn the Planning Commission meeting for tonight.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, everybody. We really appreciate you joining us.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks.
Have a good night.